I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the meeting this morning at this time, Terry, which will be the pro time. Mr. Feller, here.
Mr. Miller, here.
Mr. Foster, here.
Mr. Tolliver, here.
Commissioner Hartline, here.
First on the agenda is approval of minutes. Has everyone had a chance to look at those?
Did you make the one correction?
Yes.
We were, that was a special meeting.
Okay, this is a special.
Yeah, I thought to him would.
Okay. Okay, just correct the time.
Yep. Make a motion to approve the minutes with the correction that I just showed you, Terry.
And it was just a correction on time.
Just time.
Second.
Mr. Feller?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Commissioner Tolliver?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartline?
Yes, sir. Oh, you've got, one second. Executive session. We also have an executive session in March of 9th, 2018.
Make a motion to approve the minutes and keep it posted.
Okay.
Commissioner Feller?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartline?
Yes, sir. Next on the agenda is billing permits. Kevin says we don't have any today, but while you're here, do you want to come up and talk a little bit about the levee situation we had last year and then we can get into your representation too?
Okay. Well, May 4th last year, as you guys are well aware, we experienced almost a catastrophic event on the Mississippi River levee in that we almost lost it. We called state resources in as well as private contractors and with a Herculean effort moved 5,000 tons of rock to about 36 hours and stopped it and saved the levee. So we incurred some pretty significant costs and the state of Illinois committed at that time through IHEMA that they would pay the bill. They paid Annapolis and they paid the private contractors, but there was a couple contractors and suppliers that they chose not to pay for some reason. And so we have been since that time pursuing those additional $27,000, I think it was, worth of bills and they have now paid all those bills. So everyone has been made whole except us and we have still got losses in the bottoms, but we're glad to have the bottoms. And so that's where the status of that project is. We pursued this very adamantly because we wanted to maintain our relationship with these contractors. When this happens again, we need them to be able to respond as quickly as they did last time. They were there literally within a matter of hours and we brought the resources to better than we needed to save that levee.
There you go.
Good job.
Took Bobby's signature, that's what it took. Wheeling that pen.
Are we making how much progress on the roads now as far as the...
Well, with the last eight inch rain that we had, of course, we had several roads that were gone and we prioritized them and getting roads back open, then taking care of the safety issues, and then the next priority was taking care of the tie rod busters. And that's kind of where we're at now. We've got the roads open, safe, passable, and now we're taking care of the inconvenience of potholes and things like that. We've pretty much been across the gravel system, the unpaid roads, and we got them all back up in decent shape for March. And we're now concentrating our efforts on the potholes that are left over from the winters. The potholes are all full of water and as I've explained to you many times, we cannot put the black concrete material into a hole full of water. It turns into the consistency of a milkshake cookie and it'll just spit right out. So we're just totally wasting our time unless we can get some dry days. And once we get the dry days, we can get out for free crews, put a lot of material down. So let's tell the guys before the meeting, Body Barn Road, for example, just to get Body Barn Road back up in operation and where it was in decent shape, took 12 tons of material on more roads. So with 100 roads in the county, we've got pretty good job ahead of us to get these potholes all taken care of.
Sounds like you can take vacation next week.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just about to let him take a break.
While you're here, we'll drop down on the agenda. The new business, letter B, the resolution requesting acceptance of proposals for the furnishing of materials for the combined proposal, point of view of food maintenance by the Illinois Department of Transportation.
Okay, for Alex and Dale maybe. Every year we have to, as part of a motor fuel tax requirements, I have a purchasing authority of up to $30,000 and as does the county. Obviously, we use well an excess of that on rock, sometimes that much a month. And so we have to put those materials out for bid competitively and then we have a materials bid opening and all those things. I oversee it, Terry comes down and looks at or watches us open bids, and then we have to pass this resolution accepting those bids. And so that's what this resolution is. It's another one of the things that we have to do, another motor fuel tax program to legally purchase materials. And so our material prices this year for HFE 300, which is what we make the black concrete material out of, was up an insignificant amount, maybe 5%, but we don't purchase that much of that material. The HFE 150, which is what we do in the ownership road, for some reason was down about 20%. And I'm not certain what happened there. I've shared my bid price with some of the other county engineers and they've got passed out because they didn't get that same price. The salesman has also separated from that company two days after our opening, so I don't know what happened, but we got a good price. And then all of our rock prices were up about a quarter a ton on whatever material it was. Every one of them was consistently up a quarter a ton. Then our color prices, the material prices on those were up about 15%. So that's kind of a reflection possibly of what's going on nationally with steel prices and things like that. And so pretty much no real make or break issues here. We're glad to see the 35 cents cheaper a gallon on the HFE 150, but everything else is pretty much unexpected, or expected prices.
Anyone else have a question?
Couple of storage for that.
150?
Yes.
We have brought in tankers that spotted throughout the county. We got out of the storage business.
Yeah, I understand since the pricing there.
Yeah, yeah. They want to spot them and it stays hot about three days on the truck, so that's about what I usually got on hand is about three days worth. And we got out of the storage business. Too much hard work.
Make a motion?
Make a motion to approve the proposal.
Sir.
Commissioner Feller?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Commissioner Tolliver?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartline?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Back up on the agenda, county finances. Terry, you got your report from the last meeting. Okay. First under old business is approval of the University of Illinois extension agreement.
Good job. Morning. Right, agreement. It's that time of year for me to put together my budget, so agreement I got before you is a dollar amount of $20,000. My understanding, I think you've got that in your budget, so I would ask that you take action and approve this signature on the agreement. And then what that does is that allows me then to make plans for use of that dollars in FY '19, starting July 1st. This isn't payable until like June 30th of 2019, so. But pardon me if I'm repeating myself, but you've been consistent in the dollars that you've pledged and they've noticed that on campus. Even though we're going on year three, not receiving any state of Illinois dollars, we've had a bankroll of federal dollars up on campus that now we're releasing and they've given our unit down here, our five counties, $325,000 for the next three years. And by doing that, one of the contingencies was that I hired two people, which I have done. Mark, excuse me, Rod and Mizell is working with me on 4H in Johnson and Placid County and I've hired another girl named Erin Medvets and Erin is working on Ag Natural Resources, helping me with Master Gardener, Master Naturalist volunteers. She's based here in Indiana, I've got her at this office, and is just doing an incredible job. Another part of her job is environmental stewardship, well, and energy stewardship. She's been on the job for less than six months and has got herself into an energy grant that Extension's involved in that's paying for 15% of her salary. So that's a major win from my perspective, you know, anytime people find grants, that's a good thing, so. But she's young, energetic, and is doing a really good job, so hopefully you'll be seeing some program advertisements in those areas. And if you've got interest or if you've got questions, send them our way and we can give her in contact when we get something. But hopefully did everybody get the annual report? Good. Good. And I challenge you to peruse it and look at, and I'd invite it public. Stop by the Extension office and take a look at our annual report or go to our website and check it out. We are your Extension Service, so if you don't know who we are, you need to know who we are. I like to explain ourselves as being the face-to-face Google. So if there's something on Google you would go and look for, you could come and talk to us and our information is going to be research-based and factual so that you can stand behind Noah that it's accurate, so. Thank you for your support. Take any questions that you might have or suggestions.
I, you know, for one, I used to enjoy when you'd have a program for us once in a while and let us know while you're putting in.
Okay.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, in fact, I'll give it to Erin and have her come and introduce herself and share with you some of the things that she's got going on, so.
Good.
We're really getting into gardening more than what we had in the past. We don't have a garden project going on here in Union County, but we've got one happening down in Matzak in Metropolis. We've got a $2,500 grant to do some community gardening there. We're working with USDA down at Carroll. There's a pretty big project that's going to be happening down there. So, you know, all those lessons learned, we hope to eventually apply, you know, in all of the counties, including Union, so. Some of my high points in Union have in common are 4H tech literature program continues, so the kids are doing 3D training and stuff like that, so that's good. Of course, Mandy Huckleberry is still doing the nutrition education, so she's going in and teaching the kids healthy living habits, so. I love my job. We, it's an easy sell. I mean, as a taxpayer myself, we're getting, as a taxpayer, we're getting the value that we should from this agency, so. But thank you and I'll pass that along and we'll get on your agenda, so. Angie's been great to work with, easy to get ahold of, and I appreciate her time in this too, so.
Does anybody have any other questions? Have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the agreement between Union County and the University of Illinois Extension.
Second. Commissioner Feller?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Commissioner Tolliver?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartline?
Yes, sir. Next on the agenda, our new business is approval of bills. Has everyone had a chance to look? Any questions?
Make a motion to pay our bills.
Second.
Commissioner Feller?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Commissioner Feller?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartline?
Yes, sir. Next on the agenda is the Sex Offender Registration Notification Act. I talked to Scott and I said, you know, when we get some good news, let's talk about it, so I'm glad you're here.
Well, back in January, we applied for this grant through SWANA, which is exactly that, the Sex Offender Registration Notification Act, and it's administered through the Illinois Criminal Justice Information Authority. And I worked with Southern Five, Tiffany George from Southern Five, helped us write the grant. She's done a great job. She's wonderful to work with and we got approved. I noticed a couple of weeks ago that we got approved for it, so we're going to receive $20,000 to replace our LifeScan equipment, which is our fingerprinting, it's electronic submission of our fingerprints. So what this does is allow us to directly report this information to the Sex Offender Registration Unit that ISP, Illinois State Police maintains, so we can utilize it in that fashion for all of our sex registrants. We have about 50 in the county. But also we'll be able to utilize it as well for like what we normally do. When we do arrests, we can report this information to Bureau of Identification in the state of Illinois. So it's got two great benefits to it and so when I found out that we could use it for that, I was elated because that equipment is old and outdated and needs to be replaced. In fact, we couldn't get a maintenance unit for it this year, it's so old. So I'm looking forward to replacing that. Like I said, we got $20,000 to do that. I think we replace it for that, we'll keep putting out our application to, for that bid process to start as soon as I get to work to do that. And I hope to look to the future to find out, explore being a vendor for the state where we could, you know, charge a fee for like concealed carry, you know, all the licenses that have to have electronically submitted, so I think that would be a big benefit for us, so we're going to explore that too, so. That's all I have. I have more later, but I'll wait for the comments section I want to talk about.
Great job. I really appreciate it.
Do you think the $20,000 will get it?
I think so.
Okay. Next on the agenda is acceptance of Terry Barker, Union County President of Resignation. Could I make a statement?
Sure. I would just like everyone to know that the reason for my resignation had nothing to do with anything other than the health problems that my wife is experiencing and it had nothing to do with the county commissioners or anything that's been going on in the county itself. Just want to make that clear.
You, I have a motion to say?
I make a motion with great reluctance. Appreciate everything that you have contributed in Union County and certainly understand personal situation. And in that motion, have enjoyed working with you tremendously, that we accept your resignation.
Thank you.
Ditto. Second. Commissioner Feller?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Commissioner Feller?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartline?
Yes, sir. Next on the agenda is the Sex Offender Registration Notification Act. What I talked to Scott and I said, you know, when we get some good news, let's talk about it, so I'm glad you're here.
Well, back in January, we applied for this grant through SWANA, which is exactly that, the Sex Offender Registration Notification Act, and it's administered through the Illinois Criminal Justice Information Authority. And I worked with Southern Five, Tiffany George from Southern Five, helped us write the grant. She's done a great job. She's wonderful to work with and we got approved. I noticed a couple of weeks ago that we got approved for it, so we're going to receive $20,000 to replace our LifeScan equipment, which is our fingerprinting, it's electronic submission of our fingerprints. So what this does is allow us to directly report this information to the Sex Offender Registration Unit that ISP, Illinois State Police maintains, so we can utilize it in that fashion for all of our sex registrants. We have about 50 in the county. But also we'll be able to utilize it as well for like what we normally do. When we do arrests, we can report this information to Bureau of Identification in the state of Illinois. So it's got two great benefits to it and so when I found out that we could use it for that, I was elated because that equipment is old and outdated and needs to be replaced. In fact, we couldn't get a maintenance unit for it this year, it's so old. So I'm looking forward to replacing that. Like I said, we got $20,000 to do that. I think we replace it for that, we'll keep putting out our application to, for that bid process to start as soon as I get to work to do that. And I hope to look to the future to find out, explore being a vendor for the state where we could, you know, charge a fee for like concealed carry, you know, all the licenses that have to have electronically submitted, so I think that would be a big benefit for us, so we're going to explore that too, so. That's all I have. I have more later, but I'll wait for the comments section I want to talk about.
Great job. I really appreciate it.
Do you think the $20,000 will get it?
I think so.
Okay. Next on the agenda is acceptance of Terry Barker, I M R F Agent, President of Resignation.
to do with anything other than the health problems that my wife is experiencing and it had nothing to do with the county commissioners or anything that's been going on in the county itself. Just want to make that clear.
Yeah. Do you, I have a motion to say?
I make a motion with great reluctance. Appreciate everything that you have contributed in Union County and certainly understand personal situation. And in that motion, have enjoyed working with you tremendously, that we accept your resignation.
Thank you.
Ditto. Second. Commissioner Feller?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Commissioner Feller?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartline?
Yes, sir. Terry delivered that letter on Wednesday. The letters are getting ready to go out to the political party, so that starts the process. Next on the agenda is acceptance of Terry Barker, I M R F Agent, President of Resignation. for years. You've been the I M R F Agent since the 70s.
Eighty-three, I believe, 1980, sorry.
Have a motion?
Make a motion to accept the resignation of I M R F Agent Terry.
Say.
Commissioner Feller?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Commissioner Tolliver?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartline?
Yes, sir. Next on the agenda, we have the acceptance of Terry Barker, Popecrest Board Members' resignation.
Make a motion. Sorry. Commissioner Feller?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartline?
Yes, sir. Let's drop down to committee reports. See what's on the table.
I missed the shiny development meeting, new developments, I was a truck hand, I think we had four ton and 8,000 pounds.
Yeah.
You remember how many senior packs we had?
182 senior packs.
And William couldn't attend the meeting either because he was being election judged.
I went to, I did attend an economic development meeting and I would encourage the interest of the commissioners that can to attend the meeting on April the 11th at 9:00 AM here in this room. They're going to have some speakers that are going to come and talk about economic development for the county, so that should be a good meeting at 10:00 AM. Okay, another business, we have an ambulance bid that we need to...
More good news.
Yeah, yeah, it is a good news. Actually, I think we need to refer this bid to Grant to let him do what he needs to do and then authorize him, you know, to proceed with it, you know, to make the process complete. Talk to, I think so, it's just, that's the board's direction. Do you need anything else for minutes?
No, I've got the title and everything and I'll contact their director, talk to her and arrange a time to meet to receive the funds and get the title turned over. So I'll take care of it.
Yeah, and like we were talking earlier, we feel like this is a good bid or it's good prayer about involved.
To put it in perspective, when we started this process to purchase the new ambulance, I gave them the option with the companies to build and us pay cash or accept a trade and the first offer we got for that same unit was $2,100. So they were just going to take it for scrap basically. And then the second contact we had that I turned down was for $8,000 and I said no to that, so I think we did very well. And I think it serves both counties. It serves this one obviously and it serves one that's underserved that is getting a pretty good truck, you know, despite its age, so it's going to go on for its usefulness because it did pass state inspection with flying colors this past year, so it's going to help save someone else in another county. So we're real happy that it's going to be used for what its intended purpose is.
Terry, we have a request for a rental license.
That's just for you, doesn't, we don't have to have a motion for it or anything. I just brought it. Usually if a local commissioner does the same, is always taking care of the signing of the raffle license, a chairman of the board has done that. At first, the people came in and wanted, applied for the license as individuals. I checked the ordinance, and raffle licenses are not allowed per ordinance in Union County. For an individual, it has to be a charitable organization, religious, or some type of organization, so they are submitted with, do the same thing that the actual organization itself submitted the application this time. They'll have a 50/50 license, and it doesn't give the other, the other stuff every time. They, they normally take in donations for, to raffle off as door prizes or whatever, so. I only asked for a dollar and a half, at the time, I think it was $600 worth of door prizes plus whatever the 50/50, unfortunately I don't know what that is, if that's stated on the license. Now, I believe that's veterans, is it not, out to veterans?
If no one has any objection, then I'll sign. Did Taylor have a chance to look at the article?
Yes. Yep, he said it's good, it's being issued right now.
Good, okay. What do we need to do now that it's, that he's going to look at it?
I already emailed Raleigh this morning, he's posted on the website, we're sending it to the vendors that have requested it to be sent, you know, to them, and it'll also be, like I said, on our website for anybody to go out there and get, and then we just wait and see how many bids we get.
Did we set an in-line date on it?
Yes, and anyone said, we looked at the calendar, I'll tell you what that date was. April 13th.
Sure.
That's the date that the bids are due back by the 13th. The first week of April, we'll have a meeting on the 5th, I believe it's the 5th, where the vendors can come in and ask any questions, Raleigh will be present, answer any questions. Then a week later, on the 13th is when it's due, and then the following week, the week of the 16th through the 20th, once we see how many people bid, we will contact those people, ask them to come in, you'll have to call a special meeting, have them present their bids, so that that way we can ask questions, you guys can ask questions. They're going to be far better explained in their own bid than me reading it and trying to explain it to you, so they'll come and present their bid, and then the last week of April, just I'll follow up on anything that you guys need, and then your first board meeting in, actually, I think your last board meeting in April is when we have it scheduled to make your decision. Which would be April 27th.
Okay. On the audit, will you receive one proposal?
Yes.
Okay. Has everyone had a chance? Okay. I for one would like to check for references, although I bet it's a standard that we, we did anything, see how that comes out.
No problem.
The firm that responded or made the proposal is, it's how it's pronounced.
I can't pronounce it.
I do know the firm, Bobby, that you asked about who you're talking to, theirs, they, they were contacting you.
Yeah.
Because I followed up on that when you said that.
It's called Sikich, I believe, S-I-K-I-C-H.
Okay, so we'll, we'll check out some references on that. Tiffany, you know, you can respond to, you know, or if we need to, to the judge and tell him where we're at in the process, or if we need to furnish any more information that we can.
Okay, I'll reach out to him, send him an email and see if they need anything.
As far as the bid goes that we received from Sikich, they were proposing to have the audits complete, including yours, Tiffany, by June.
Okay.
A lot of work for 2018.
I was going to say that.
About a month and a half.
Of 2018.
Yeah, I have 15, 16, and 17.
I know.
Soon, so, okay.
Yeah.
I wonder how detailed that audit, those audits will be.
Yeah, I'd like to discuss that.
Yeah, they have coming, coming here to the county, starting in April, and working all through April and all through May, and she said it would be several people coming.